Good evening. Welcome to the April 5th, 2021 meeting of Bedford City Council. If you would please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, call the roll, please.
Cochee?
Here.
Spinks?
Here.
Janutus?
Here.
Lou Hardy?
Here.
Mizak?
Here.
Saunders?
Here.
Council, you have the minutes of the work session of March 15th, 2021. Any corrections to that? Seeing none, can I have motion for acceptance by Spinks, second by Janutus? Call the roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Mizak?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes. And you have the minutes of the regular meeting of March 15th, 2021. Any corrections to that? Seeing none, motion for acceptance by Mizak, second by Saunders. Call the roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Mizak?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes. And we have the minutes of the special work session of March 22nd, 2021. Any corrections to that? Seeing none, can I have motion for acceptance by Spinks, second by Janutus? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Mizak?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes. And we have Resolution 2562-21. Being a resolution appointing Jeff A. Asbury to fill the unexpired term of Heather Rhodes, councilman of Ward 5, and declaring an emergency. I have a motion to accept. Saunders, second by Mizak. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spinks?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Lou Hardy?
Yes.
Mizak?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes. Well, congratulations. And at this point, as everyone here knows, a couple of my favorite things to do are swearing people in, whether it's for a new position, or for promotion, or a new member to our safety forces. I always enjoy doing that, and I get to enjoy it one more time. So Jeff, if you would like to come up and... Kelly would like to join you, she may.
She'll be the photographer?
All right. If you will repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Jeff Asbury.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter and laws of the city of Bedford, Ohio.
And the Charter and laws of the city of Bedford, Ohio.
And faithfully.
And faithfully.
Honestly.
Honestly.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Discharge the duties of the position of councilman, Ward 5.
Discharge the duties of the position of councilman, Ward 5.
Of the city of Bedford, Ohio.
Help me God. Of the city of Bedford, Ohio. So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
You'll have to sign these in just a second, but first, if you'd like to make an introduction here.
I'd like to thank my wife, Kelly, almost 35 years, for supporting me and making this happen. Friends on the fire department, thank you so much for showing up. Council, mayor, I thank you for the opportunity to work beside you, for the residents of Ward 5 in the city of Bedford. Looking forward to getting to work. Thank you.
Good. And with that, if you would turn that plaque around.
Absolutely. It's misspelled.
There we go. And we'll get you to autograph these. Thanks, guys, for coming.
Okay, we'll see you.
I... I'll start.
Yeah, we could push that chair out.
Pull that chair out.
Push it back.
You spread out a little bit.
You can always just push Saunders, nobody cares. The other thing is...
Easy, easy to knock over.
We have a certificate of congratulations for the finance departments of Frank. Jennifer, you both like to come up here? I know we talked about this at the last council meeting, but I wanted to make it official because I looked in your office, and I think there's one little place to put another plaque where you have a wall face. See his office, it's just lined with awards. But this is a certificate of congratulations to the Bedford Finance Department. The city of Bedford, Ohio wishes to express recognition and congratulations to the finance department under the leadership of Finance Director Frank Gambosi for the GFOA Government Finance Officers Association. Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the 30th consecutive year. In 30 years. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting. It is achieved by less than 5% of all state and local governments annually. That's amazing. And to do it 30 years in a row, you've got to be in the... If not the top, you've got to be number one or two with 30 years. Now, therefore, I stand, Cochee, Mayor, City of Bedford, on behalf of the city council and administration, and all the citizens of Bedford, extend sincere congratulations and express our pride in the finance department on this outstanding accomplishment.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
Just a quick word, you know, it is quite an honor to get this award. We've had a lot of great staff members over the years to help with our finances, as well as starting from the top down with council, wanting financial reporting to be the best that you can do, the staff that we prepare, the city managers over time, my staff, and working with the state authorities to complete these types of awards. And we have a great working relationship that even this city, believe it or not, we've had two perfect awards where there were no comments. It's very hard to attain. So over the years, we've had... I appreciate council support and my support of my department and its employees, and thank you. It's a great achievement, and glad to do that on behalf of the city.
You have a great team there.
It's great to have Jennifer on board, and she's done a great job these last couple of years, and it's helped us immensely to keep achieving these awards and brings her credentials with us. So thanks again. Thank you.
Excellent, excellent. Thank you. We have no old business tonight. Our city manager, Mike Malice, is off with some well-deserved time off. We hope he gets some rest and relaxation out of this week off. And that report of our law director.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to congratulate our new councilperson, Jeff Asbury, and Mr. Gambosi and the department for their achievement and their report.
Thank you. Finance Director, Frank Gambosi.
Again, congratulations, Jeff. I'm happy to have you onboard. Look forward to working with you. And just one item in regards to the tax department.
Yeah, so you can hear.
In regards to filing season this year, we know the extension was made to May 17th. However, what we'd like you to have all the residents who haven't filed so far, to get your information into us if you haven't completed the returns, we will then process that in the department. If you do get it into us by the end of April, we can turn that around so that you can have the payments in, if necessary, by the May 17 deadline. So just a reminder to drop that in our box or send it in mail to us, and we'll be able to process those for you. Thanks.
Thank you. City Council, Mrs. Spinks.
Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone had a blessed Easter and Passover. It was weird again not having my grandchildren. I decorated my yard anyway, so that was fun. Got to see grandkids hunting eggs on the FaceTime, so still not used to that. I'll be glad when we can go back to normal. Chipper service is going to be coming out this week, I believe starts tomorrow. So make sure you get your limbs out, make sure that you call Service Department, get them, notify them that you have stuff. Another, some high winds we had last week, some more branches and stuff were down. And Jeff, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Frank, Jen, again, thank y'all. It's pretty impressive. We're very lucky to have you. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Janutus.
Thank you. Well, I hope everyone had a wonderful Easter, or if you don't celebrate Easter, at least enjoy the good weather. And, you know, with the warm weather, we can make a connection to nature, and that'll just, you know, help us all be healthy. The... It's funny, you know, that governments are really run by economists, and the city of Bedford is no different because when it comes to what we do, we're always looking to Frank. And no matter what kind of decision is being made, we always look to Frank Gambosi. You know, what do you think, Frank? Is this okay? Whatever. Because everyone is, you know, the whole world is concerned with the bottom line. And it's just, it's no secret that our finances really dictate a lot of the decisions we made. But I have a question. If you've gotten this award for 30 years, when did you get your first award? When you were 10 years old? Holy mackerel. And then, of course, we know that you're... We've been made aware that you're part of a whole professional organization of people in your profession, so it's really a credit. It's a credit to the city of Bedford, really, to have you, so congratulations. And welcome to Jeff Asbury. So it was interesting, all that happened, and, you know, fate seemed to have intervened. And here you are. And it's kind of fascinating because Jeff has always seemed like one of us. I mean, he's always come to so many of the work sessions, and he's been in on all these conversations that we've had in our work sessions. And, you know, it's no question that he's very knowledgeable about what we're doing. And I think Jeff is also widely recognized in the community as an exemplary citizen. So this is just really a wonderful thing, Jeff. Congratulations, and it's good that you're here.
Thank you.
You're the right guy to be here, no doubt. So that's how it turned out. Very good. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Lou Hardy.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank or welcome Jeff aboard to our group here. Frank, you guys, your staff, Jennifer, and everybody in there. Like Wally said, you know, you guys do a lot for us that, you know, behind the scenes that we don't see, but you get results and you save the... Do goodbye for the city and save some money. And, I mean, any decisions you guys make, we're pretty much right behind you. You guys do a good job, and I feel confident with you 100%. And I know I've only been on here a few years, but I've seen a lot that you guys do. And, you know, you're never going to retire, at least as long as I'm up here, so I'll tell you that, because we need you, that's for sure. And like I said, your staff and Mike, Mike too, Mike does a lot for us. And I'm all aboard with you guys, so good job. End of report.
Thank you. Mrs. Mizak.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody, and the usual, welcome aboard. Congratulations. And Frank, I knew you could do it again. I knew that. But you're outstanding, you're caring, and you know what? You're very thorough. And I believe, well, Wally had you already at like five. I thought you were going to be about 15 when we first started with all your awards. I'm sure you got them when you were young, too. But it's an honor to know you, work with you, and see you achieve so well. Jennifer, how to do it the right way. Both of you, congratulations. I have, I'm glad that John's in front of me because I got questions for you tonight. I was, we had a little powwow with a few of the residents of Colony Club thing. Oh, that that's a private, privately owned situation with the rental of the apartments up there. However, a few ladies and gentlemen in the area that really care about their surroundings who we are, I would like to know possibly if... You can run this by Calvin, press a letter to the Don or the management in the office there that doesn't really... The only thing they want is the people's rent. There's a lot of the garages that have to really be cleaned out and brought up to date. They're very messy. And also, there's a lot of problems with leaves and that. I know the season's just starting for cleanup for everybody and that, but I know we can give them a timeframe as to their advertising that they have a beautiful place for people to come in and be one of their residents and members of their apartment complex. Well, they have to enhance it to make it aesthetically nice to get new customers. And I believe that rental, anybody who is as young as is 18 years old, which is to me kind of young because a lot of the younger ones, it's a place to stay, but there's no responsibility as being a loyal resident to the group or to the apartment complex. There's also, they have in their contracts, you can have a dog, but it's got to be no bigger than maybe a little medium-sized dog. Well, they don't adhere to their own rule because there are, and I've witnessed it, several pit bulls, quite big, heavy set, muscle pit bulls, walking with the owner of them. I don't wish most of the time, but they're getting away with not checking or following up with the ones that ask if they can have a pet as to requirements of the size of the animal. Little task, I know, but they're leaning on me for some answers, and I thought I could bring it to you. And then, you know, if there's a little letter or some sort, we could address those few things properly up to speed as far as making it aesthetically pleasant for the eye, everybody, and the dogs, size of the dogs that is allowed to be on their premises. I would appreciate it.
No problem.
While you're still in front of me, did you ever check in at Hopin and see if they're selling wine and beer and if they're going to do that? Because two or three of the other gas stations in the area already do it. Why should we have some more, make it beside drugs up at that corner? I don't know what else we're going to have happen. So if we can look into that also. Okay. And then as far as Ward 4, we're surviving the winter and starting the spring. And most people know that they have to have their... There's garbage cans that could have been brought in over this last week, but we had the snow and stuff, so I'm sure they use that for an excuse. But everybody's starting to get their yard in order, and just putting things on the tree lawn would be the best part of pick up for the city to make it easy for them and to make it better for everybody else because we don't need it in the street. End of report. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Saunders.
There you go. Skip Jeff, not giving him an opportunity.
He might be last.
All right. Well, unfortunately, Mike isn't here. So I'm just going to make a couple comments first, and then hopefully John can take the other ones to Mike. If anybody hasn't been to one of our newest businesses in town, Birdie Sweet Shop opened up. They had a pre-opening a week ago, and then this past weekend, they did their official grand opening. They have a variety of different sweets, cupcakes and cakes and cookies and candy and shakes and you name it. It's one of those shops that if you've got a sweet tooth, you can't pass this place by. It happens to be next door to Marco's Pizza, which is behind Burger King and that little strip plaza there. It's a great place to go and visit and spend some time if you can. Get up there and help patronize the business and welcome them to Bedford. The other thing I want to make a comment, and this is happening in all communities lately, and I know if you read your water bill insert and seen the city's website, it has to do with the sanitary sewer system. People are flushing these flushable wipes that aren't really flushable. And other odds and ends, that stuff isn't flushable. It causes sewer problems, especially when it hits one of the pump stations. It's clogging the pumps. It's not just in Bedford, but it's in all the communities. It's one of those things that they advertise this, but it really doesn't work that way. So be cognizant of what you're flushing because you could be causing a problem. And if you even got a small tree root in your sewer, this stuff will hang up on it, and it expands, and it catches more stuff, and before you know it, you're going to have a heck of a sewer bill. So just remember that you're responsible for the sewer from the house to the right-of-way line or the sidewalk street, whatever you want to call it. The city's only responsible from when it hits that point to the street, the actual sewer. So I've noticed more and more people are having to dig their sewers up. That's part of the, one of the problems that it's turning out to be the case. Like I said, a lot of the homes in this town are really old, so they still have the old clay tile. And of course, the tree roots tend to get into the joints there, and just a few little tree roots is enough to cause a problem with these things that are being flushed down. So be careful of what you're flushing, keep an eye on that, and help save time and effort and actually tax dollars because that's what's ultimately being spent to help correct some of these things. The big thing that I want to bring up, though, and John will have to take this over to Mike, is the Northfield Road Bridge. I don't know if anybody's driven over to Northfield Road Bridge, but in the last week and a half, three sections of the parapet wall on the south side of the bridge have collapsed. They've fallen in onto the sidewalk, and they're creating a heck of a nuisance. The one section actually broke all the way down. One of the fence posts, don't lean on that fence, by the way, on either side of the bridge because you'll go over with it. But we need to inform ODOT that they have a major problem there. If it spalls the same way on the outer side of those parapet walls, they could potentially hit somebody down below. And if it happens over Broadway, that could become a critical issue. So we need ODOT out there to either chip away what's loose or actually go out and fix the thing. It's going to begin to look like the old arch bridge that used to be over the valley there where you had steel hanging and so forth, because there's steel hanging off the parapet wall now, but it's on the sidewalk side. I haven't looked over the edge to see if it is on the outer edge, but usually if it's on one side, it's also on the other, and it could become a very big safety issue there. So the other thing is, is I will be abstaining from the one GDP contract with terrorist construction for the Ellenwood waterline job. My son was hired by GPD, but it was, he was hired out of the Akron office. However, because of COVID, they moved him over here, and he finished that job up. So rather than create a conflict with that, I will be abstaining on that vote. In the same light, my younger son, I have to say I'm proud of him. He passed his first half of his engineer's license, the fundamentals exam. That's a comprehensive exam on everything you took in college, so it's an extremely tough exam. I know it took me more than once to do it, but he will also become part of the Order of the Engineer. His ceremony will be on April 15th at CSU. So that's where he pledged basically, put service before profit for the most part, but that you'll do your best as an engineer and you receive a stainless steel ring, which I have on mine because I just happened to be able to get it resized because he was getting his because I couldn't wear mine anymore, it was too small. But you wear it on your little finger of your working hand to show people that you're an engineer. So I want to say congratulations to him. He's a Bedford... I grew up here in Bedford, so it's another accomplishment for residents. Anybody that says your younger generation isn't amounting to anything, that's not necessarily true. Thank you.
Thank you. And congratulations to your son.
Thank you.
That's good. That's very good. Mr. Asbury, before you speak, Paula and Don, Heather left her timer here, so at least let's get a little momentum. Put it over there. Mr. Asbury, your turn.
That's all you've got, the time to talk.
Heather, this is for you. Once again, thank you, Mayor, Council, the administration. I really appreciate the opportunity to work for and to be representative of the residents of Ward 5 in the city of Bedford. Thank you. Most everything has been touched on, Frank and your department. 30 years, that's phenomenal. Congratulations. Don took my thunder about Sweet Birdies. I was there for the soft opening, and oh my goodness, it's good. It's very good. So if you get a chance, please, check out Sweet Birdies. And with the weather opening up, remember our downtown businesses, some of them are still struggling, so let's do everything that we can to support our local businesses. The Bedford Downtown Alliance is going to be starting up with their first Fridays again in May, so stay tuned for more information on that. I would like to give out my information so you can get ahold of me, since my business cards aren't here yet. My cell phone, if you need it, is 216-401-7806. And my new email is jasberryward5@bedfordoh.gov. End of report. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job. Don, as far as the bridge goes, I know that the state has been given hundreds of pictures.
Yes.
And Mike's been on them for two years now, and they have been out looking at the bridge. I seen them out there.
This just happened within the last week.
Yeah, the collapse. But they have been out on the bridge finally.
Yeah, I've seen them out there, but they're not doing the maintenance that they should be.
No. And I stress to everybody, that bridge belongs to the state of Ohio, not the city of Bedford.
They may have to...
So I'm not pointing any fingers.
Yeah.
But Ohio Department of Transportation is responsible for that bridge. Let's, I'll leave it at that. And on a pleasant note...
And on a pleasant note, I want to thank Bedford Garden Club and their president, Gene Saper, who sent us two checks, one for $500 for install flowers on the Union Street Bridge, as they do every year, and $100 for the Arbor Day tree planting, which will be coming up. So, and I want, especially want to thank the Garden Club, they do that every year, they come out and take care of our flower beds here, they just, they just are terrific people that help us out a lot. But just so you know the money spent, I already got a letter from the Service Department, from the Bedford Garden Club for Union Street Flowers and Arbor Day Planning, so they have earmarked the money, if they want to be to show that they are doing with the money what they're supposed to. And soon as things start blooming, we will all get to enjoy the beauty of those flowers and they just, they just do a terrific job and they're, they're every year helping out. Again, thanks to the Bedford Garden Club. And I think that's all I have.
That's another question.
Yes.
Frank, I know we're not coming back till after April 15th, we, taxes are due April 15th?
No. The state of Ohio requires they have extended to May 17th. So, what I ask everybody to do is to, you know, get their papers in, if they haven't prepared their taxes or the returns, we'll do it for them behind the scenes, in front of them, face to face, but we'll get that out to them, we can bill them for what to do and then they can pay on time by May 17th.
Okay.
Dan has been working very well, kind of part of working with people, we've done that all year already and last year, and so far, very, very well received. We get a lot of people just dropping the W2s off, we let everything sit for a while because of COVID for a day, then we'll process everything and then we'll kick out bills to the people to pay on time.
Okay.
So, it does help people that way, it does build system and.
Thank you. All right, let's get down to business here. Ordinance number 9860-21 and ordinance amending ordinance number 9859-21, authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Terrace Construction Company, Inc., for the Ellenwood Waterline Replacement Project, being the lowest responsive and responsible bidder and declaring an emergency. Can I have a motion for suspension? Spinks, second by Fluharty, call the roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spink?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes. Motion for third and final by Miesak, second by Asbury. Frank, you want to handle that?
Yeah, basically what we're doing with this ordinance is this is the water line on Ellenwood. We have, earlier we had some figures in there, we're amending it to show actual road construction being charged to the road portion and water to the water, water fund. So, at this point, we have 376,000 of the project will be the water line and parts of the road, as well as 47,000, almost 48,000, that's going to be charged to the Street Improvement Fund.
Thank you.
Ask Council to approve that this evening, please.
Any questions? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spink?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Abstaining. Ordinance number 9861-21 and ordinance.
Is that for emergency, Mayor?
Pardon?
Is that done, vote for emergency?
Yes, we're going to need to vote. Yes, you can vote on these, because this is new business, so if you would like to change your vote.
I think that was Don.
Jeff?
Don said, Don abstained.
Oh, you abstained?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I wasn't watching, I was just listening.
Jeff voted.
Oh, that's the one you were going to abstain on, from his son, yeah. So, we cannot pass that tonight. What do we need? Just six of us, right?
Yeah.
You can pass it.
Yeah, it can pass.
Okay, all right.
You have six to vote.
Oh, we're good then. Right, John?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Assuming you all voted yes.
Yeah, we all voted yes.
But you still got, you tested on emergency, now you got to vote on passage.
We did.
We did.
We did a suspension and then we did the third and final.
Did a motion to suspend the third and final, yeah.
Okay, we're good.
Okay, we're good.
Keep us legal, that's why you're there, okay. Ordinance number 9861-21 and ordinance authorizing the purchase of one 2022 International Truck, HV507SFA four by two, HV507 cab and chassis to be equipped with salt spreader and plow hitch. ODOT invitation number 023-21 and declaring an emergency. I have a motion for suspension. By Fluharty, second by Janutus. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spink?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
I have a motion for third and final by Miesak, second by Saunders.
If I may, Mayor, in regards to the next.
Talk about the next two, this one and the next one.
Yes, I was going to address both of those. Basically, we're looking at a salt truck replacing a 1998 that we have still that we were using. Obviously, that's outdated, we need to get a new one. These have been budgeted in this year's budget and I ask Council to approve both ordinance 9861 and 9862 at this time, so we can go ahead with that purchase and these are both on state purchasing bids and already been bid out there by state law.
Thank you. Questions? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spink?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance number 9862-21 and ordinance authorizing the purchase of one Concord Nor'easter MPS-1055C-S Heavy Duty Chassis Mounted Multipurpose Granular Materials Spreader and a Heavy Duty Municipal Power Angling Snowflow through the state of Ohio Term Schedule Contract Number 800860, Index Number ST515 and declaring an emergency. A motion for suspension by Saunders, second by Asbury. Clerk, call the roll.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spink?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Motion for third and final, Spinks, second by Fluharty. Frank talked about this, this is the spreader and the plow that goes on top of the chassis we just passed, so. Any questions on that? Call the roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spink?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance number 9863-21 and ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Allied Door Systems LLC and declaring an emergency. A motion for suspension by Spinks, second by Janutus. Call the roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spink?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Motion for third and final by Miesak, second by Asbury.
If I may, Mayor, in regards to the Allied Door Systems, we originally purchased it with COVID funds to go ahead and replace the, get touchless doors here. When we saw that that worked well, we doubled up on that and did all the doors. Then we found that at this point, it was going a little bit too good in that as you walked by, you were opening the doors and you weren't really going through the doors. So, we went to a wave type system in front of the doors and that's what this was, a little extra cost to put those wave type extras onto the system. So, we asked Council to pass that this evening.
Yeah, because anybody who walked by that door, a deer, it'd come roaming around the city, so that's a good, a good switch there. Any questions? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spink?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance number 9864-21 and ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with GPD Group to conduct a no feasible alternatives analysis and declaring an emergency. And it's our intention to put this on first reading and can I have a motion for such by Miesak, second by Saunders. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spink?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Just for clarification, this is a rather extensive study that is going to go into our wastewater and needs just a little more tweaking, I believe, so we will hold that till next meeting. That's it. It come to that time of the meeting for a hearing of citizens. If you wish to make a comment, please email citymanager@bedfordoh.gov. Do we have some?
There's no audio on the YouTube system? Oh, there's no audio on the YouTube? I think that will be corrected when it gets posted.
We will, we will check with IT. Thanks for letting us, let us know that.
Thank you.
That's it. Thank you. Nothing else? Usually it does come through on the city when it gets uploaded, so hopefully that'll be the case or, and you can't even lip read, so. That and, yeah, refresh again and no comments, so, bad. Ask for a motion for adjournment by Asbury, second by Miesak. Council, or Council Clerk, call the roll, please.
Cochee?
Yes.
Spink?
Yes.
Janutus?
Yes.
Fluharty?
Yes.
Miesak?
Yes.
Asbury?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Thank you all for listening and have a good night.
Thank you.